Councilor Peter?
Here.
Councilor Hamlet?
Here.
Sorry, can I have some more wood?
It's okay.
The one my name came early.
It did. Councilor Lee here, Councilor Exman.
Yeah, here.
Councilor here.
Mayor.
Here. Well, good evening, welcome to Dave Snyder night.
It is indeed.
So, quick hour work session here. We're gonna quickly review tonight's agenda. Brevity is key if you don't wanna slip and slide too much on your way home this evening. Then we're going to go over the tourism grants, possible Centennial Plaza improvements. Dave's gonna have kind of an update from the meeting a couple of months ago as well, some commentary from our last council meeting on some improvements at Centennial Plaza. And then we're going to try to provide staff some direction on the Economic Development Committee, review what we're looking for, what kind of a committee commission format we want, some parameters and goals and possible membership recruitment for that. So, first item is reviewing this evening's agenda. We're gonna start off with the oath of office for Bethany.
That's right.
Yes, full rostrum. Then, we're going to have a resolution to, for additional services from Murray Smith, our consulting firm, for the wastewater facilities plan. Was there any comments or questions on that before we have it for open discussion at tonight's meeting?
So, is this based off of everything we discussed right here at the end of the whole year? Before coming, before the new year, we had that presentation from them and we, you know, I went through it and it was like, it was and it was like, so this is about changing the loan with the state of Oregon?
Mm-hmm. To pay for the additional scope services to keep moving forward on the facilities plan. It doesn't pay for, you know, the delivery, the design, your engineering.
Yeah, great.
Yeah, so that we've been, my understanding is we've basically received our deliverables from Murray Smith.
Mm-hmm.
And now, to continue the project forward, we have to get more money from the loan to pay for additional services, right?
Yeah, the INI work and scoping that out and additional.
Public means.
Stuff like that, yeah.
For that part, remember it was like four hundred thousand?
Yeah.
We spent that already, four hundred grand's gone.
No, I think we spent.
Fifty now?
Yeah, I think closer to like two hundred and fifty for the full facilities plan.
We've already spent that for.
Yeah.
And for sure, a little more?
Oh, yeah. Is that anything?
For the plan, I'm just talking the plan, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, part of it will be receiving comments and compiling those and responding to the changes council or all that might have.
And then smoke testing's part of this, all that kinda stuff?
So, we've got INI stuff going on too?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Okay, I thought this was just part of the plan.
I didn't realize that we did, that would pay for all of the INIs. Is it just a portion of the INI or is it gonna be covering the whole city for that INI? Cause I thought that part of it was over a million dollars still.
Absolutely, this is, you know, this is just the work on behalf of the engineering firm to help us scope out the next step on doing the INI and smoke testing, things like that. It doesn't pay for that work.
Doesn't include the smoke testing, just scoping it out.
Yeah, recommendations how to approach that and, you know, as Mike talked about, we might do a lot of that stuff in-house still. And then we have to kind of weigh the pros and cons and can we contract that out or can we do some of that on our own?
Are they doing some of that work right now, move to? Yeah, cause they were just off my road a couple days ago, I saw that TV screen. And I wanted to stop and watch.
A while, it's like fun.
How bad is it?
If we get a schedule, I'll be down on my seat and run by and check it out.
Top of Pleasant. Pleasant Revival.
Oh, yeah, you get an old neighborhood up there, you can watch them.
All right, moving on, is we good? Okay, well, have more discussion obviously tonight at the meeting about it. All right, then the next item is city goals. This should be a pretty quick one, this is our second chance to talk about what staff gathered from our conversations at our goal setting. We continue to be good with those for the most part. Yeah, great. And then the engineers report, so we have some residents over left John's Road area that's looking to create an LID district for, to basically extend sewer out there. Mike Walker is going to be here to kind of update us on the scope of that project. We will be having a vote on that, but basically the vote is, do we want to continue to pursue this and receive, you know, more, more information at a future meeting?
There's an A and a B on there though, isn't there? Isn't that part of the decision?
Yeah, that's right, there's two ways to go.
Do we know if the citizens that live in that area want it?
Well, that's how, that's what generated this, was a petition from the residents.
So, we know that they do want it?
Well, we, we know that there's a certain amount of them that proactively want it, yeah.
Yeah, sixty-four percent or something had to be favored. It was brought to us at the council meeting in September, October timeframe, I recall right, the first time.
And it looked like both of those, the price parameters were pretty close to each other. One was a little bit more expensive.
I know, yeah. Looking at the maps, trying to figure out what the difference between A and B was. That was a question I had was, I can't tell, you know, like it pointed out like what the difference was there cause I couldn't figure it out.
And are you guys still talking about the shades for the?
No.
You know, you're talking about the orange stuff?
No, Kathleen, we're just going through the agenda right now.
We haven't even hit the orange stuff.
We haven't even hit that stuff yet.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Um, I, just to answer that, I think, I think it talks about in the pages before the map.
I think it discusses exactly what the difference is, I can't, I read it this morning
and I don't remember, but it seemed like one, there was a grade increase or something and that's, that was the cost difference, the big thing, yeah.
Okay, so it'll be that, and then the consent agenda, it's pretty, I mean, it's like minutes and stuff. Everybody pretty good with the consent agenda?
I am, I do have a change in the minutes, the minutes I found were inaccurate in one piece, so I wanted to make a.
An amendment to?
Amendment to that.
Okay.
It was based off of our, well, maybe before.
You give it now and we can make the change and then it's correct and we can send it in.
Um, it was, it wasn't much in the minutes, so except stand speed at the end.
Yeah, I noticed that covered that link.
It was the, the one agenda item, it was changing the economic development, economic development, our stance on growth in the city. And it was, in the minutes, it said the exact same thing as what was proposed for us to vote on, but we unanimously voted to take out the additional sentences prior to that and leave just the last sentence in it, but that didn't reflect that in the minutes.
Oh.
Carrie, are you pretty clear on what we're talking about there?
I'm, I was gonna.
And then staff, I'll tell my team if they disagree.
Yep. Cool, okay. All right, so next item on the agenda here for our work session in Dave Snyder night is the tourism grants, Centennial Plaza improvements, you have kind of a report that.
Yeah, well, first of all, where is the shade sales report, it wasn't attached.
Yeah, it was attached, okay, I can bring it up to you if you wanna.
Yeah, so, just to recap, last time, we talked about a concept that we came up with for, to provide shade sales for Centennial Plaza. We, it, it was affordable enough for us and we could go out and get some designs done, so we did that on our own and got designs between, I wanna say thirty-six and forty-five thousand dollars, depending on which option to go with. As we presented this to council, the feedback we kind of got was, well, I mean, it got kind of tapered. So, and there was some talk of maybe going bigger, there was some talk of maybe staying where we were at or, or not doing it at all, we just kind of wanted to get some additional direction as to what you guys think about this and how we should go about, if this is something that you'd like to pursue, and there was some mention of maybe using the CPP grant as a possibility for at least partial funding for this, if you'd like us to do it.
So, let's, just starting with grant, what is the timeline of the grant and what is the scope of that grant? Just so that's part of our conversation.
Sure, sure, so, the CPP grant is twenty thousand, there's a twenty thousand dollar outlet that's put out by Lockins County Tourism for each community in Lockins County. They put this up to encourage locals to put in grant applications for projects that will increase tourism. And by increasing tourism, they mean drawing people from outside a fifty mile radius into town or getting them to spend the night, heads in that side. Over the course of years, we've, you know, we've had a lot of people and businesses from the city apply for these projects with varying success, the cities also apply. Typically, the city doesn't apply for a CPP grant unless there's funding left on the table. For instance, last year, we only had one grant application, that was from Ant Farm for six thousand dollars and we didn't want, if you don't spend the twenty thousand dollar outlet, if you don't have enough applications for that, the funding goes back to Lockins County and then Lockins County Tourism decides where that money gets, which may, may or may not be in our community.
So, that is for our community and the city can apply for it?
The city can apply for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it's designated for Sandy though?
It's designated for Sandy community, yeah.
And so, we're gonna, if we have applications for it, we're gonna get twenty-five thousand?
Twenty.
Okay, we're gonna get twenty thousand.
If we have, if there are applications requesting twenty thousand, yes, well, it'll usually go out unless the applications for those projects just absolutely flat out don't qualify for it. And there's some qualifications, I can give you the qualifications really quick. Well, you know, they do have a section called ineligible projects. What they wanna see is alignment with the county's tourism goals. Again, generating overnight stays or attracting tourists from outside the community, leveraging additional dollars, and I think it sounds like maybe you guys might have an idea about.
Urban renewal or?
Yeah, or, yeah, any, any, any source that they come from. They wanna see projects that are self-sustaining, have growth potential and are capacity building and, and this one's kind of hard to do, so they kind of give us a pass on this. Offer measurable or demonstrable ROI.
For twenty grand.
Well, yeah, or, or for five grand sometimes, like with the arch out there, I was like, how do you do ROI on an opportunity, they said, put there. So, they're not super strict on the last one. Projects that are eligible and they give a lot of applications that aren't eligible, those provide profitability or benefit to a single lodging partner, business or individual. Capital projects benefiting a private for-profit, for-profit enterprise or property. The Best Western put in an application several years back for bikes. They wanted to get a bunch of mountain bikes that people could ride mountain bikes around the downtown and they said, you guys can buy some bikes. Compensation to applicant worthy for executing their own projects, so you can't pay somebody, self-dealing basically. They don't allow grant administration or project management expenses, so you can't. Entertainment at events, although funds can be used to promote events with entertainment as attraction, and Ant Farm put in an application a while ago for the farmer's market, they wanted to have musicians play there, which is a great idea, but they won't pay for it.
They won't pay for the musicians?
They won't pay for the musicians, they'll pay for the event. Yeah, correct. Community beautification, streetscape or banner projects, like putting highway banners up, they say pretty much that's the responsibility of the city, we should be more careful.
Define streets, streetscapes?
Um, street trees, sidewalks.
That's getting taken or?
Yeah, that sort of stuff.
Those are not gonna be there?
Yeah, those things are not, they won't pay for it.
Would the, the sale of, would they be inappropriate in this case?
Yeah, because they look at that as kind of infrastructure.
We're thinking that that may not be something, that we can use as part of this grant then?
No, no, I think we can, I think we, if we can do the money for art with this grant, we could definitely.
Oh, yeah, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And finally, normal operating costs, so if it's sort of, you know, like if Mountain Festival asked for funds to pay their, you know, security people.
And then to clarify, if, if council or the city, the city applied for it, were looked at as any, just any other entity in the city of Sandy that's applying for it?
Correct.
All right, so then there's two issues here, one is, is we're getting our report back on Centennial Plaza and what, what do you call these?
Shade sales.
Shades, the shades for Centennial Plaza, and then the other question is, do we wanna use this grant as teamed up with possible renewal dollars or something, be able to move forward? So, at that same meeting though, I remember John pulled up Pickathon and kind of showed another example of some of the, I don't know if you call those shadings or art or?
Also shades.
Also shades. At the last council meeting, I brought up kind of tents, right, kind of like what you see or like the Holiday Ella Festival up near Square, that could be used in the winter as well as you remove the sides, that would also provide shading for summer events. You could also use those maybe to rent out for community events and stuff for the community. So, those are some different ways we can go, and I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, for one thing, more thing out there, I have, the reason I came up here tonight was, I had, I think I had mentioned today about some other ideas, cause he was talking about the TAP grants for the, those. I, I've worked a lot with these grants in the past and they're now, they used to be called TAP, tourism matching plan, now they're called CPP, community partnership projects. My language is still off. The one idea that I had for, for us is that we did such a great job, David, with that project on the John's Viewpoint with the reviewing of the curbs and stuff for buses to be able to get in there. The interpretive signs up there are duck and the little view master thing, the binoculars, the glasses, those are also in portal shading. And so, I kind of looked into the possibility of replacing the interpretive signs. I, it was done by, I found out who the people who did it originally, the artist was a local artist here in Sandy, Roger Cook, and he passed away, probably you don't remember, some of you guys know him?
Oh, yeah. He took a picture of John's Ruins Viewpoint.
Yeah, he, he's just a great guy. Anyways, his family's still around and so I was going to, you know, I'm willing to volunteer to kind of help put together a proposal for, you know, kind of putting a bow on John's Review Point now that the curbs are done to try to kind of fix it up, cause it's such a big draw, my gosh, you know, the traffic around there is really bad. So, so that kind of is, you know, if you're looking for other projects, those view masters are not cheap and the poss, and the potential is to also have one that's barrier free, so people in wheelchairs can also look at it. They kind of have these double modes, one, you know, kind of taller one and a, and a side one that's storage or like a water fountain.
Kathleen, did you price it out when you were looking at that stuff?
I haven't priced it out, but they're, you know, they're well within the twenty-two thousand dollars.
Okay.
So, yeah, and so that was just something to kind of consider. And then the other thing with regards to this, the Centennial Plaza, is that as we're, you know, pursuing our Parks and Trails Master Plan, you know, I think it's really helpful to kind of understand what the, all the uses are that you're trying to meet.
Yeah.
You know, I think seating in there is kind of something you might wanna consider and so seating with umbrellas or, you know, you're just trying to figure out kind of a little bit more of a thought out process of what's the problem we're trying to solve there and what are the options that are out there to do that.
Do we consider Centennial Plaza a park?
Yeah, it's considered.
Yeah.
What is the due date?
For the CPP, the twenty eighth. The application isn't.
Yeah, it's really, and it's not a hard and fast date, my experience is.
Yeah, if we get it in a day or two later.
You know, even in March, they're, you know, they're not.
Carl?
So, in this process of the grant, can we use some of that to plan some of this? I'm kind of in the mode of what Kathleen talked about and the fact that I think that there is some more thinking about what needs to go into that plaza. I like the idea of seating, I like the idea of covering it for shade and I don't know if it will work for rain, but I think it will extend the timeframe that you can get in there. So, is there some, some planning that could go into that grant or would that be part of our contribution? Or what's the percentage if there is any?
Uh, I don't believe there is any and yeah, that would be eligible as well, sure.
I'm gonna go to John here in a second, the one thing I do just wanna make sure is clear is, if we choose to use the grant for something else, like a project like Kathleen's talking about, that doesn't mean that we don't have to move forward with this, right? It's just whether or not we use the grant for this project. This could continue to be something that comes in front of our urban renewal board and everything that we review. They can be linked, but they also can remain separate, John?
So, yes, I've got a number of questions, but then also kind of tying into that conversation as well, cause I'm looking at, we could kind of spitball a whole bunch of ideas, but to get really structured with prioritized list of plans that may be eligible for this. So, David, the question I have, so this is twenty thousand dollars a year. Do they spend that for Sandy, do we end up spending all of that money every year? Or do we not apply for it and we, cause I, I guess my concern is that we've left twenty grand on the table.
Continually.
Year after year after year. And then I, I know I made a comment last time we met too about us advertising for the grant, where it's like, we've got plenty of needs, I mean, we did a big transfer earlier this year in the budget. Isn't the most beautiful thing on the planet, so there's twenty grand sitting out there. I say, let's go after it as a priority, we've got plenty of projects that we do, we just need to get a list of prioritized projects as well, so.
To answer that question, yes, there have been funds left on the table before. It hasn't been very much and hasn't been very often. We have had years where we only get ten, twelve thousand dollars with asks. We've had a year where we got thirty-eight thousand actually with asks and then we had to pare it down and do portions. Or, you know, some of those grants, even though they were eligible, we had to tell them, sorry, the tourist board looked at it.
We've also had, where we've allocated the money and they didn't finish the project.
Also true.
We lost the money.
Also true.
Yeah, I think just prioritizing with the city, I think it's, I mean, I think it's great to have the opportunities, but those entities like Ant Farm has the same opportunity to apply for it.
Yeah, they can go out and find, they can go out and find the grant themselves, so you don't need us to pay.
We can find our own grant and we do that for transportation, we wouldn't advertise a huge transportation grant to Metro.
I know, and in insurance, I don't send out my competitor brokerages and say, you can buy insurance from them too.
The concern I have is if we have a list of projects, we have to prove one at the next meeting in two weeks that we're going to apply.
That's right.
So, we need to tighten it up a little bit.
Yeah, I think the only one with any kind of planning behind it that's probably ready at this point is the one we're looking at.
That's what I'm thinking.
And I think it's, I, I think it'd be really easy to draw, drum up some more ideas.
Yeah, quick question, do you, does anyone know if, is John's Ruins Viewpoint within our urban renewal district?
No, it's not.
Okay.
So, coming back to this particular shade sale thing, I know when we first were approached to have come out of urban renewal, and I guess I become a little uneasy with kind of, we have a big, huge project over there with the community campus and, and maybe we need to start restructuring urban renewal so that we can focus on some things and so a little bit of money here and a little bit of money there. It all adds up to big money and not say that this isn't a good idea that I'm just kind of concerned about using urban renewal for some things, as I kind of get stressed out about money for the community campus or some other thing, projects we wanna do, cause, you know, it gets really easy to, you know, do every project in the world and maybe we need to recalibrate and do that. I think Kathleen, we've talked about this in the past, I think so bringing it up, cause I had forgotten about it. Maybe a good idea. I think if we're gonna go forward with something in the plaza though, as I said about the urban renewal money, I'd be more up to do it if we had this matching grant with the, or a grant that's paying for a portion of that, right? And so, we aren't spending that.
All of it.
Right, and so, looking for other opportunities for that there. I guess I just have concern, I, we brought up at the last one about Centennial Plaza and, you know, what kind of events with the highways going up and down it. Should we be taking that money and maybe try and do something with the community campus? It's a pickathon, you know, technically, what it may be and, and so just cautious on that aspect of it. Those are just the kind of things I was thinking about. But another one is getting the list, like John was saying earlier, it's like, hey, get in this priority list and we can brainstorm and bring it back and have the council and staff and everybody else in the community. Just another one, I was thinking about this art commission and this would be, what Redmond did is they went and bought a bunch, or had a lot of artists and bolted it to the sidewalks here and there and everywhere and then they bought one every year and, and then that's how they're building their art, street art everywhere, you know?
Do we also do something similar?
Yeah.
And it's, it's another project that, you know, that, that could possibly be used for as well, so. Not to kind of throw in more ideas into the pot to spread out, cause we don't have these vetted out or know how much they cost, but.
But did we do any additional research after that last meeting on the kinds of shading that, that John had, had brought up at that meeting that was similar to that of Pickathon? Cause that was kind of more of an elaborate setup.
Well, I, two things on that, first of all, we did meet with a company other than Wickham and the initial company, and the name's escaping me at the moment, the initial company we met with did the, the structure at Pickathon and also did the structure at, at, at an event that I was actually there after, at Dan and Candy, that was about that same size. Yeah, the initial quote we got from that would be, the first year would be, I think it was somewhere between eighty-five and a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars and then it'd be about sixty thousand a year for a few years after.
Why?
That's just a big charge.
Well, for what though, I guess, for installation, is it phased?
Installation, design, structures, all of that, but it was, it would have been a larger and much more elaborate structure. We didn't go to the design phase on that because the cost that, that they were talking about, we, it was just.
Wait, so we viewed, even though this was thirty-five thousand, that being at eighty thousand, we viewed as astronomical and outside of the.
Well, eighty to a hundred and twenty-five in the first year.
Yeah.
So, with this, these are thirty-five to forty-five one-time costs.
It was Gilworth's.
Gilworth's, that was the name of, yeah.
But there's also cost to put it in and take it out of it, right?
Yeah, also true, yeah, so they would come in and put it up at the.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that we have an awful lot of things that are coming up on the table in very little time and I'm inclined to think maybe we'll narrow down our thoughts about what we wanna spend. I agree with Jeremy that I'm a little nervous about where the urban renewal funds are going and if we can put, combine them with some other funds like this grant, I think really has a lot of benefit for me. I'm a little bit torn between going something for John's Ruins, I know how popular that is, but I also feel like this is a real central spot in our city and really, really draws tourism. I can just, in my mind's eye, I can see the colors, I can see the sails and all, maybe the lights. I understand the cost, but this really would make a drop card for the city. And anyway, I think make a big difference in who uses it and how much it's used too, cause I know the sun shines a real, she will know summertime and we can get some shoulder season and add to the times we use this and maybe even something with the Christmas tent that goes on there. I don't know how that might work, but my guess is that. I don't know how that might work, but my guess is that once we get the money put aside, we'll probably find a way, plan it, figure it out, keep it within the budget. I'm, I'm inclined to think we should narrow the looks, maybe two items, maybe only one item, but let's not try and make the whole world, because it, two weeks, three weeks to go, right?
Right. Jordan, do you have some comments?
Yeah, so I mean, that's one of my concerns is, is, is this the right idea that you want to submit for a grant when, I don't know if they've received other grants, but we've advertised and other community organizations have applied for this grant in the past, so you would be possibly competing or taking that money away from other community organizations that are providing a benefit to Sandy. Just listening to your meeting in December, I don't know if this is the right solution and if we should hurry through to, you know, getting ready to get this.
Jordan, but it's the same solution. I, I mean, just to be clear, I'm very unsatisfied with the information that we're receiving here tonight, because it's the same solution that was presented three months ago. And yet, we've had conversations about this pickathon concept, we've had conversations about tents and heated tents and stuff in the Centennial Plaza, and yet we're returning to the same conversation that we had three months ago with the clock running, three weeks to, to apply for the, for the grant. So I mean, I just, I'm a little unsatisfied with that. Lori?
Yeah, so question. So let's say we decide that we want to go with a shade concept. If we apply for that grant, are we locked into this company or can we still research and get bids and quotes from other people?
In the allotted time that we have left.
I don't mean the three weeks, I just mean if we get the grant.
Oh, yeah.
If we're awarded the grant, do we still have the latitude to go out and use another vendor? Or are we locked in with these guys?
Even, even happening, because they are, because us, by state section, we're requiring some of that.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I figured.
It's just the idea of it.
Yep.
Right.
Thanks.
One of the things I'll say is that this kind of highlights one of the challenges that we're gonna talk about at our next workshop, about how these kind of park projects get, you know, kind of thought up and then, and then prioritized. And so I know one of the things that I've been hearing about for a long time is the need for shade sales in the, um, Orsted Park by the splash pad. That's a big thing that every, I've heard a lot about on Facebook and stuff. And so, you know, that's the value of having, getting going on this parks master plan is it takes all these projects, figures out what, you know, what else out there, what, what's the problem we're trying to solve, what's the solution, what are all the projects, prioritizes those projects, and then it, it identifies a bunch of different funding sources, especially grants, some SDCs, um, urban development funds and things like that that can, can help fund these projects. And, you know, kind of matches them up with the priorities. And so that's the one question I would ask you is that, you know, I'm, I'm aware of a lot of the parks projects, and I, and this one kind of came a little bit out of left field for me. Not to say it's not a cool, groovy project, but I'm just thinking that it would be helpful to kind of meld it in, you know, meld the project into one of the many other ones that are out there, uh, when you're doing, you know, in the next nine months when we complete the parks master plan. And then look at the business. But I think there's ways to spend the money, you know, for the grant stuff.
All right, so, so her, thank you. I'm gonna try to direct the conversation among council here for the rest of the session, because we have this economic development committee that's gonna take a big portion of time as well, and we gotta narrow the conversation.
I agree with Kathleen, but at the moment, we don't have a master plan. We need to move forward or give the grant to somebody else, and I'm sure that we probably have more than a good priority for doing it on this particular spot, so in my mind, I think we gotta move forward on something that we have in the face of it. Move forward on the master plan as it comes up too.
Just to be clear, the Sandy Tourism Board decides who gets the funding. So if they decide that they get four different projects and, um, they only have three thousand dollars left for this project, that they would be the ones that decide?
Wait a second, the tourism board decides the project, not the, not Clackamas County who reviews?
Correct. Our local tourism board decides.
I thought, see, I thought the tourism board helped apply and identify grants, I didn't understand.
No, they actually reviewed the grant.
There's also two different types of grant funding. So you get that give me twenty thousand that the city decides on, and, or the local tourism, and then you still have Clackamas County tourism dollars if you can apply for that are bigger than the twenty.
Yes, that's a different grant program.
I understand.
Yeah, that's the tourism development.
Have we applied for one of those anytime recently?
Yeah, we, uh, I applied for one of those to do the little bike plaza out here, and it wasn't, I mean, you, those, so the tourism development grants are between five thousand and a hundred thousand, you can do bigger projects with those, and I think that was.
Do we have any direction? Jordan?
Well, I think some of the comments we heard is, they're urban renewal process, we're gonna have a study session, and Jeremy maybe didn't, also people that sort of maybe help you, like, think about urban renewal and how much money is available. There's funds available, it's just a matter of prioritizing those funds between, like, between center and other projects that are, you know, ready to go within the district. But this, you know, if you want to do something special here, instead of, you know, just putting up shades that get taken up and taken down, you know, in the season, that, it does take a little more design work, it does take a little more research, it takes a little more engaging with the art community and the parks community to say, is this something that we want in this park, or is there a higher priority, this kind of dollars? To just come back and, and throw another design or, um, you know, another concept, I think it'll take, we should do a little bit more due diligence in working with our citizen groups and also, um, exploring, you know, working with PSU, I, I started that conversation to see if we can get one of their architectural classes to, you know, throw in some, uh, time to design something that's a little, you know, more Sandy style and meets the needs of that particular park. But, um, my, you know, my caution was that, you know, it just feels a little rushed to try and come up with a project, and even December to now, it doesn't give us enough time to do something, didn't give us enough time to do really something that would be really special for this, you know, centerpiece in our town.
Yeah, yeah. So if you're kind of looking for kind of a direction, my thoughts would be, while I really, really like this idea, I would like to see something more expansive.
I agree.
Um, and so being that, and I think that John's route idea is a good idea, it's outside the urban renewal, so I think that might be a better use of this grant at this time with the short, with the short timeframe that we have.
So Lori, I'm comfortable with that direction actually as well. Now, that's kind of why I want, I started off by saying, I think this project and a bigger expansion of it does not need to be tied in necessarily with this grant. As John mentioned, there's other tourism grants within Clackamas County. Before we know it, it's gonna be a year, and we're gonna be right back in this as well for maybe another phase of this. And concerned we can't use urban renewal dollars or anything else, you know, I think, ah, gosh, I can't remember who we were, it was, it was Lead Oregon Cities, I think, John's route viewpoint comes up.
Yeah.
Over and over and over again. It's a hotly, um, you know, tourist place. I remember being young, the Blazer games on NBC, they would always go, vision of John's route viewpoint, you know, coming back in.
Is it the number one photograph location in the whole state?
I think it is.
Yeah, go ahead.
And the John's route viewpoint, uh, project, it is actually a CPP project. This is one of those projects where they took all the money back in from the communities that wasn't spent. This was the number one project that Clackamas County Tourism wanted to see done, and they actually wanted us to pay for part of it earlier, and we told them, just have the funds, they kind of, fine, huge capital. And so, I mean, that's, so this is an example of the CPP project actually bringing funds in from outside the community to see.
So the John's route is funded then?
Yeah. Not only is it funded.
No, the, the bus stuff is funded.
The bus?
Oh, yeah, the bus, yeah. To me, the bus stuff.
So then updating the signage and the monoculars and.
So just to move, thanks for, because we want to get going, it sounds like we're all talking about the John's route viewpoint, I think that we, we don't have to have that exact number, I think we could also find if it was two thousand dollars more than that twenty thousand or whatever it may be, we'll be able to find the funds for that. So I would say, in the next three weeks.
I'll apply for it.
Yeah.
Um, that we could, um, and like, before the deadline, no, like after deadlines, but before the deadlines, uh, be able to find that and propose it. It sounds like it may be very positive for the tourism board, I think it is the number one spot, so.
Let's do it. All right, move forward, clear direction. Kathleen?
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good timing, huh?
Yeah.
All right.
Can I ask one thing too? Uh, because I think a bigger piece of this conversation too is just money left on the table. I know it's maybe not explicitly laid out in our goals, but I think it's important to, uh, work towards stronger development, um, in the city. So knowing there's five to a hundred thousand dollars in the county tourism and then up to twenty thousand, that we could be in just this category. I know we do a lot of this with, uh, transportation, but just to really pursue those dollars, because I think we'd see our, our funds go quite a bit further and our projects be able to be completed as well.
Agreed. Yeah, thanks. All right, next item, Economic Development Committee. Dave?
So, um, council would like, has stated that they would like to create an economic development committee or advisory board, so, um, we're just gonna, um, go through some of the nuts and bolts of that tonight. So council, uh, so resolution twenty eighteen, uh, twenty eighteen dash fourteen established the policies and procedures for, uh, boards and commissions. I guess let's just start with the very beginning. Would, the first question would be, um, advisory board, uh, how many members?
Well, hold on, I guess the first item though is, is this gonna be an advisory board or a commission?
Yeah, well, actually, that's a good one. Is this gonna be an advisory board or a commission?
So do you mind, uh, whether it's you or Jordan just giving us a little bit of the parameters of the difference between a commission, a committee, and all that?
So recent change, and, and please councillors who are here, tie in. So there was a recent change in council rules in two thousand and eighteen where definitions between advisory board, committees, commissions were outlined, and then how those boards are chaired, um, how the council liaisons serve on those boards, uh, formation of those boards or committees. And just to, you know, simplify it down to the simplest form, essentially have a planning commission that's still in the city code that we're required by state to have. We have a budget committee that's required again by state, we treat the state that we have a budget committee. Um, and then we now have an arts commission that is a commission. But the, the remaining boards are advisory boards, so you have the parks and trails advisory board, the library board, uh, there's still, um, you know, Sandy Net advisory board. Those are created by, um, resolution by the city council, and per this, these council rules that were adopted, uh, city councillors serve as liaisons, not voting members, cannot be a chair or vice chair of that advisory board, because these boards are really set up to advise you, uh, the city council, and the, the liaisons are there to give information, you know, give updates on what the council's, uh, up to and, and what the city's working on, and then relay information back to the city council.
And real quick, we can change those rules whenever. That's just how it's currently set up.
And according to the website, I checked again last night, it says it's the rules from two thousand and fifteen, not two thousand and eighteen. So if you look at the website, what we can go look at and read, I just did it last night.
This is a policy though, not your council rules. Your council rules have not been changed. This is a policy that you guys.
Okay.
We didn't finish the council rules like we were going to.
Right.
Right, so. Okay.
Yep, go ahead, yep.
So, yeah, the, uh, the first question really is, um, you know, do we want to modify the administrative rules around advisory boards and, and boards and commissions so that, uh, as I understand this new economic development committee or economic development advisory board or whatever you want to name it, um, the councillor can serve as a chair that, uh, you know, that maybe the rules are a little bit different, such as we have with the arts commission and the, and the planning commission. You can identify, you know, certain sectors of the community that you want to serve on this, uh, committee, um, as opposed to just a general, you know, um, at-large membership. So I, I think the purpose of this work session is to have this sort of opportunity to talk to you about what do you want us to bring back in terms of mission, scope, membership, how do you want us to recruit for it? And again, do you want to set it up by an ordinance or modify your rules and still adopt it by resolution? And we're just clear in that resolution on what, uh, this formation looks like.
So just, I want to go back to the very beginning of kind of how this conversation got started, was there's a conversation between Jeremy and I where, uh, well, one is a new mayor, I'm going through the committees, right, and looking through the committee assignments. And we had a committee, we had the tourism committee that was on there that we just talked about here a couple of minutes ago, that meets basically one time a year to allot, you know, this twenty thousand dollar, uh, grant. And then we also had in quotes, you know, a business friendly, uh, committee, uh, that would kind of be an advisory committee and be outbound in the business community and advise back about ways that we could become more business friendly. And the talk kind of was is, maybe we should merge those two committees and really be more proactive with this economic development committee and, uh, be real outbound, trying to, uh, kind of take action, be meeting with different businesses, uh, be, uh, looking at best practices for if there's enterprise zones, opportunity zones, uh, if there's, you know, the, uh, skipper on a deed property, identifying those and working with our economic development manager to be outbound in kind of the listings of those properties and working with those owners to, a perfect example is, uh, Internet was ablaze with Dutch Brothers coming into town over the weekend. And, yeah, and it could be, and that, and, but the talk kind of is, is, you know, and this is totally, you know, beside that, is if it's not Dutch Brothers going in there, what kind of, what kind of business do we want there? What kind of businesses do we want to attract to Sandy for community need and, and how's our infrastructure set up around it? And really setting up a committee that tries to work kind of hand in glove with the different property owners in town to identify and advise back and, uh, so as you can tell, I'm already kind of all over the place, and that's why we're having this conversation, is to provide this committee some direction. But I do think it's gonna be important that, one is, 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 I'm not looking for, me personally, maybe you guys are, not necessarily looking for an advisory committee, certainly we want to hear advice back, but we're looking for something that's more of a proactive, uh, committee that really displays our coun, that takes our council goals and then goes and really pushes to try to implement those and get those kind of going and, and flowing out there. Yeah, Carl?
What you described, it kind of goes through my memory about what I was hoping would be done in this particular area. But I'm also have some, several concerns in all the things, again, my mind is going in the same, bouncing around like a ping pong and a windstorm kind of ideas, but there are so many things that are happening in the world that we probably need some movers and shakers. Have an advisor committee that likes to give us advice and stuff, it's not gonna cut it. We need somebody who can meet with the businesses, meet with the, the potential businesses and bring in those kinds of folks and be able to tell us when they're really in trouble and need to have some really, some power and some energy from the council or maybe from the city or maybe, maybe money. I think it's gonna have to be something fairly strong and something well thought out, rather than this committee of whatever numbers of, of community or, uh, people and whatever you're dragging up. I think it's gonna have to be some sharper people, I just, don't want to say that negatively, but some people with some power in there and be able to talk to those companies.
Jan?
I was thinking, after I heard what Jordan was saying, that this is really more like a commission, because we want to have some of the members who are on the council be able to vote and make decisions, and we want to choose who in the community. So it seems like that would be the best opportunity.
Okay. Uh, Jeremy?
Can we shoot that for our?
All you gotta do is take the matter.
Like, I'm sleeping tonight, no, no, um, no, um, no, um, Jordan, or Jordan.
Call the fire department.
The fire department. Hey, we have a fire, man, yeah, we're gonna take that. Um, like Stan was saying, this goes back for me, it goes back to, it was my third year on council, I went to the National League of Cities down in San Antonio. And so I was there with, uh, Olga and, uh, Lois, uh, many councillors ago, right? Just seems like yesterday we were on board, but, um, the point being is, out of that, we had gone to, um, we had, uh, talked to several, uh, different cities around the to several different cities around the area, and some of them were cities just like ours. And so we were talking to them, and well, how did you get so-and-so to come in, and these type of things. And there was a couple of things that came up out of that meeting. And we came back and been super excited ever since. And just, we started off strong and then just kind of, I felt petered off a little bit. And one of them was hiring an economic development manager, director, whatever you want to be, and.
I'd love to be the director.
That's how David started, that position. And David was here on other tasks, and Scott Lazenby moved him into that position back then, that day, and going forward. And it's, and we've seen this great progress, right, in going there. And one of the things that came out of it was we had to have a cut sheet. And you had to go out and be able to go out and attract the businesses that your community wants, because people aren't just gonna come here. It's not like you're gonna just show up. You need to go let them know that you built it, right, and, and those type of things. I mean, you do have some commercial lands that are out there that, you know, the property owners of there just don't have those talents or needs, but it really does change our economic, our livability. You know, I talk about, you know, great places to live, work, and play, but, you know, that also means being able to shop in town, or be able to go have presents, and those type of things. And so just that proactiveness that comes with a councillor's name or mayor's name attached when you're meeting with some of them opens those doors that just sometimes don't get opened in other ways, all over, regionally or nationally, and those type of things. And being able to bring the community together to figure out what is needed. So, that was what happened back then. That was a long time ago, nine years ago or so. But, and just wanted to see that progress, is we, we just seem to, you know, been kind of even skilled about growth, and we're changing that, right?
Sure. Lori?
Well, I was just gonna, in tying in with that, and I do think that that's very valuable. You know, it would be nice to have a, a group of people, whether it's a committee or a commission, that, hey, this property is coming available, and this would be a great location for said business. So let's, instead of losing those properties to something else. So, you know, I, I, I think, I would, I would personally like to see that be part of their, you know.
Jeremy?
Agenda.
Chair.
What, what is it about you?
We've got David here, economic development manager. And as I hear the conversation, there's a part of me that keeps going back and forth between, is this a commission or is this an expectation we should have on city staff? Is this a committee that's doing this work or is this the work of city staff? And so that's a piece I keep struggling with the answer on, because I think that, I don't know, it's just when we're asking people to be going out, engaging with business owners, and trying to get them to buy this lot, it just seems like that's not a non-staff position to be taken. Like, I, I understand, like, the facilitation being a part of the process, but to actually have somebody like actively, progressively working towards that, it just feels like it's an expectation on staff.
Well, and that's part of it too, but another part of it is, is, you know, at our goal settings, we've talked about looking at the Sandy style and enhancing that, making that more local business friendly, right, and looking at the sign code. And now, I'm not a builder, right? So when people complain and say that it's unfavorable and that they have to spend a lot of money in development, I, I don't have, I, I just don't have the experience to really understand and figure out how legitimate that is. And so what it kind of comes down to, I think, is by developing a committee like this, you know, they're able to do a lot of work on our behalf for that advisory type role as well, to advise back to us what they're hearing and stuff from the community as well. Because we only, I mean, you're looking at all the different work sessions we have coming up, all the different meetings. We have a pretty big plate ourselves, and really kind of utilizing this committee to do a lot of heavy lifting or reporting back to us as well, yeah.
It seems also to me that there are things that should come back to council, things like code changes to make it easier for these businesses to show up.
Right.
We talked about incentives that are monetary or maybe even non-monetary, that we may need to do some changes to make this business show up and be able to be here. So whoever does the job, and maybe a city staff, whether than a council or commission, or committee or commission, I think there has to be some understanding about what the processes are. So, again, I'm advocating for skilled people in this group, staff position or in a commission. And I think I'm headed for one of those two.
Well, and, and by the way, I mean, if you think about it from a commission standpoint, like what Kelly's leadership is with our planning commission, right, and granted, that's a different deal because that's state mandated. You know, I, I'd envision eventually being like David, that sitting there really kind of driving that train and working as, you know, that main person, and, and really taking that leadership role with the economic development committee to make sure that it's linked, you know, hand in glove with staff. You had something, Jordan?
Yeah, I think, couple thoughts here. It's helpful when you start with a new board, give them some meat, really get into it right off the bat. And I think we're probably, I'll go back to more plans, but probably due to update or create a new economic development strategy, which can help guide, you know, what the work is going forward, once we have the strategy and action plan for, you know, achieving some of these goals of council goals, or other city goals that we have in economic development. And then, you know, going forward to be there to help in assisting staff in implementing that plan and giving recommendations to the council. Code changes, council etc. I mentioned is a, is a great suggestion, that there are some things that we can look at, sign codes, same style, things that really do affect business in attracting, you know, businesses to invest here. And then incentive programs, which with the growth policy now we devise, the council can really get some good expertise and staff as well, on getting input on what are some incentive programs that make sense for this community. So, you know, I, I see those, like, giving them some structure right off the bat, that to form this committee would help us in how we manage and staff this board, but also I think really help you in getting to the point of what you're looking for.
So Jordan, what, you're hearing from this discussion right now, are you feeling like you're hearing the want for more of a commission or more of a committee based on your understanding of the two?
Or a plan. Honestly, it feels like the tail wag on the dog.
Sure.
But, but it's okay to have, you know, volunteers and citizens involved with developing that plan. This is obviously very more formal than us going door to door, David going door to door really, and talking to every business about what you want to see in a, a plan. But I think names, it's, it's up to you guys really. Like honestly, we can change definitions if you want to call it a commission or you want to call it a committee. You know, we'll, we'll write the resolution ordinance, whatever, to fit that.
But I do want council leadership on it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, pieces of it are just important.
Jan?
The other thing we talked about was getting the communications person, because David does a lot of different things, and economic development is only one, and we'd like to see him perhaps only do that.
Yeah, right. Totally. Believe me, my Super Bowl Sunday of answering questions on Dutch Brothers, I, I would like to see someone doing communications as well.
Yeah, I hope that thing's a boring game.
Yeah, that's right. All right. Feel good?
I think so, yeah. We have enough to build something. It might take another, you know, bring a draft of what it looks like and then to opt in.
But then as far as membership goes, right, I mean, my thoughts on it was, one, is, like we talked about council leadership, it'd be nice to have someone from planning on there, right, because we're taking in a lot of those requests. You know, local business owners, but from a wide spectrum of retail to development.
I think.
Chamber of Commerce should totally have a representative. Kelly?
Were you saying planning commissioner?
Yeah, is that inappropriate because of quasi judicial and all that?
I think you could range a lot of expertise.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, yeah.
So, I think it was brought up in the, in your, they were talking about whether or not we advertise or appoint, or, and, and I would recommend starting off being an appointment of those, that we seek out, those skill sets that we're looking for, and try to find those individuals that are part of it versus the alternative, which would be to advertise out there, just anyone wanting to.
Yeah, I think we want to proactively approach people.
Yep.
Yeah.
We're gonna rock solid charge first.
That's how we started Sandinette Board and the bails.
Yeah. Okay. All right, let's go ahead and call this session a close, and then clean up for the meeting.
Nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Bethany Schultz, the big moment. Let's see here. Why don't we come around out front? Do you have any family, anyone ready to take a picture of you doing this? We're all set. Is that your right hand? Repeat after me. I, Bethany Schultz.
I, Bethany Schultz.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Oregon.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and of the State of Oregon.
And that I will, to the best of my ability.
That I will, to the best of my ability.
Perform the duties of city councillor of the City of Sandy.
Perform the duties of the, sorry?
Of city councillor of the City of Sandy.
City councillor of the City of Sandy.
During my entire term of office.
During my entire term of office.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well, councillor Schultz, we're, I can speak for the rest of us to say we're extremely excited to have you joining us, and especially with your past leadership on the Parks Committee and representing a young family here in town. I want to let everybody know councillor Schultz has agreed to serve as our liaison to the library committee, where I think you said during your interview that you spent a plethora of your time. So we're excited about that, and I just wanted to kind of give you the floor to say a few words if you'd like.
Okay. I'm so thankful to all of you for appointing me to the council. Thankful to all my family and friends that have joined us for the occasion. And I'm very excited to jump in and help support the city in this new capacity, and, yeah, thank you.
Well, welcome. We're excited to have you. Wanted to just take a pause here before we get going for any family and friends that would like to maybe beat the weather home so that you're not driving on icy conditions. Of course, you're more than welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting as well if you would like, so.
Up to you.
Hey, good choice.
Promise to be fast, though.
Bye-bye.
Oh, is that yours?
Yep.
That's great. All right, Carrie, would you like to call the roll?
Sure.
Councillor Peetzel.
Here.
Councillor Smallpenny.
Here.
Councillor Hamblin.
Present.
Councillor Lee.
Here.
Councillor Exman.
Here.
Councillor Schultz.
Here.
And Mayor Collier.
Here. All right, well, welcome, everybody. You know, I mentioned earlier at a work session, I think brevity might be the key word of the day so that we're, have safe conditions to go home. Not a hefty agenda today. Under resolutions, we're going to be reviewing the wastewater facilities plan and some additional services for our contract with the Murray Smith consulting contract. Prior to that, we will be open for any comments from the public. You'll have five minutes to speak. If you do decide to do that, please approach the podium, say your name and your address. After resolutions under new business, we'll be adopting our 2019 city council goals. We'll have an engineer's report for a proposed Bluff-Johnsrueda Local Development District, and then we'll have our consent agenda, followed by city manager and council and committee reports. First up, let's, is there any changes to the agenda? Okay. This will be an opportunity for any public comment on any items facing the council. Seeing none, we'll move on to resolutions of the wastewater facilities plan and additional services on our consulting contract for Murray Smith. I believe Mr. Mike Walker, you're up.
Thank you. There's kind of a lot of moving parts in this process. We have to have a resolution that will authorize the city manager to sign the loan amendment, and then, once we, once that's been approved, or if that's approved, then the next thing would be to approve the amendment to the consulting contract with Murray Smith to perform the additional services. So that's really the meat of it. The other two pieces are just kind of the, is enabled. But, you know, we started with Murray Smith in February of 2018. They completed the plan, submitted a draft, it's available for public review on the city's website. And one thing we learned, as part of the planning process, was that what we thought would be kind of this simple, straightforward process is not going to be simple and straightforward, and it's going to take more time than we anticipated. And to kind of bridge the gap between completing the facilities plan and the next step in the process, we need some services that, you know, Murray Smith has performed as part of the facilities plan development, and just some initial services to help us negotiate the DEQ process and to help us with the collection system, recommended collection system improvements. We want to get a jump on that this summer so we can make some progress on the issues in our collection system. And then also do some preliminary work surrounding the preferred alternative for the discharge and the siding of some of the facilities that would be necessary to pursue the preferred alternative to the plan. And as well, there's also some consulting services for communications consultant, that's part of the scope of work. Kind of juggled some of the tasks around there so we can make some room for that, as well as some financial planning services that they'll help in concert with another, they see a contract here in early March for some consulting services to help us with the revising our wastewater systems development charges and our water sewer rates as well. And so it helps to have the engineer on board to help us with cost estimating and trying to plug some of those numbers into, into the financial model.
All right, open for discussion. Is there any questions from council? Councillor Exman, you look like you're ready to talk.
Yeah, go ahead. Is there any limit on this, the number of dollars we're talking about, or are we gonna tell them they've only got additional dollars with no increases that we're talking about at this place?
Well, no, this would be an amendment to the existing contract we have with them, and, and our existing agreement with DEQ to fund the facilities plan. And it's, it's a fixed dollar amount, I think it's $199,941. So we rounded that up to $200,000.
Okay, I get that part. This is a, and I'm aware that in different kinds of plans, there's always the unknown, and somebody's rat comes out, I don't know if I'd take to use that simile with our sewer plant, but that's the way it is. So if that does come up, and you think we might be able to see an additional request because we exceeded our amount that we would expect from Murray Smith, or are we just saying that's it?
No, I think, I think this will get us where we need to be. And once we renegotiate the timeline and our mutual order and agreement with DEQ, I think, you know, then we'll be able to proceed with the next step, which would be engaging consultants to do the detailed design. And, you know, do, you know, we'll have to spend a lot of time and effort on characterizing water quality in the Sandy River the way it is now, and doing a lot of analysis to try and characterize what it would be with the addition of the discharge from the city, the new treatment plant. And so, but this, that's, is not included here. This would just get us to that next step. We're in a good position to solicit proposals from consultants that will get us to, you know, perform the next step.
Mike, my understanding on this, it, just in a broad sense, is that this is moving us forward to allow us to receive a scope of work from the consultants.
Well, it's really, one of the most important parts of it in here is the helping us with the WIFIA.
Yep.
Water Infrastructure Finance Program, help us, they're gonna give us a letter of interest, and we have to get that in by June 1st, and that will really help clear up the financing picture of what is successful in getting rid of those loans. And that's, that's the, that's the lion's share of the work there. The negotiation with DEQ is probably the second most important piece. And right up there is the preliminary work on looking at, meeting with DEQ, find out what the, kind of the, you know, sideboards are, or what it would take to pursue the, preserve a preferred alternative.
Additionally, I noticed that there's some communications in this as well. And so one, it's obviously they're assisting us with watershed, council outreach, our public meeting and those things. But also, there was kind of developing a communications plan. And my question is, Murray, I'm, does Murray Smith have this capability within their firm, or are they kind of subcontracting this work out to, to like a public relations firm to assist with?
Yeah, yeah, they're proposing to use a sub-consultant, Barney Inworth, and they, you know, they specialize in all of this.
Is there a reason we wouldn't find our own PR firm outside of this arrangement, that we would work through Murray Smith to do this?
Well, I think we could, but, you know, that would require another solicitation and vetting and a contract or negotiating a scope and fee. This is a fixed amount for some pretty, you know, kind of well-defined services. And I think it will get us to the point where we'll have a better grip on the communications end of it.
And do they have a pretty good working relationship? There's probably somebody they work with a lot.
They, they do a lot of work with Barney Inworth.
Okay.
I think that's a great idea for the future, when we do get our next budget cycle, and we're looking for that public communications person. I think it's great that the State of Oregon's looking at allowing us to amend this loan process through this.
Well, I find, well, remember, they require you, they require you to do something, they say, but we'll help you pay for it.
Yeah, maybe that was a wrong choice of words, not great, but it's nice that we're able to maneuver around the system.
Yeah.
And I, I get your point there as well, so I'm ready to make.
Cool.
Amendment, or a recommendation, unless there's any other.
I think we're good discussion, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2019 dash two.
Second.
Motioned by councillor Peetzel, second by councillor Lee.
Is there any public testimony?
Absolutely not, there is not at this time.
Oh, no, I just didn't, I didn't know which one this was.
Yeah, no, the, the public, the opportunity for public comment for items was, that was in the previous, was on the previous moment here, when I opened it up for public comment.
I thought that was for things off the agenda.
No, that's just for items. The only time that we have to also. No, that's just for items. The only time that we have to also open up for times is when it's actually a public open, for a public hearing. Yeah, otherwise, that is the opportunity for individuals to speak, as earlier. So is there a motion and a second? Discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to the next item of new business, 2019 City Council goals. George, you're up.
So really briefly, these are your 2019 City Council goals. At the last meeting, the council held a work session on the council goals following your retreat on January 5th. Did not hear any feedback in terms of changing any of the words or goals, or adding any additional goals to that list. But I can tell you, we're already have a head start on these goals, and looking forward to working with the council and completing these goals in this year.
Great, open for discussion. Yeah, I think it's been pretty for a second time this has been in front of us. Looks great. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to adopt City Council goals for 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion by Counselor Smallwood for the acceptance of our 2019 City Council goals, the second by Counselor Exner. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item up is the engineer's report for a proposed Bluff-Johnsrued Local Improvement District.
You know, what I'd like to do is before Thomas Fisher presents the staff report, I would like to kind of go over the LID process. It's in the, at the tail end of the engineer's report. This is kind of a rarely-used process to finance public improvements. And since it is so rarely used, we don't have a lot of experience with it, so I think it's good to kind of go through the process. The flow chart kind of shows where we're at here. We received the petition in August or July from residents in the area, and they asked the council to pursue formation of an LID that had the requisite number of signatures. The council moved to direct staff to prepare the engineer's report. And now, at the third box downward, you know, we've received and reviewed the report. There's three steps in this process to take. You either stop it right here, you can approve the report as presented, or you can send the report back for modifications. And then, you know, then there's an opportunity where we actually develop the assessment role, notify people in the district. There's another public hearing. They would have the opportunity to either remonstrate or vote in favor or in opposition to the formation of the district. So this doesn't really obligate anybody to do anything. There's some proposed assessments in here, but there's another opportunity to raise objections to the formation of the district at a public hearing. Everybody gets notified by mail, and that's really, and a lot of the questions that might arise can be answered at those next steps. And a part of the reason Thomas is presenting the staff report, I live in the district, and so I'm trying to stake in an arm's length from the whole process. And just turn to Thomas.
Thank you.
Welcome, Thomas.
Thank you. So background, a little background, August 6th meeting, the petition was submitted before that. It was submitted to council, and we move forward with the engineer's report, which we're presenting tonight. So there's two alternatives. One runs directly down Bluff Road, no easements required. The other one runs behind, runs west off of Bluff, behind a few properties to serve. I think there's four homes along there. In the report, or in the staff report, I think we mixed up alternative A and B, possibly. I just noticed that two minutes ago. But alternative A is a little bit cheaper, and it does that even with the easement costs. And I think that one was a little bit deeper than alternative B. It was just a couple minor things were the, of the cost differences. We have the sketches in the report, and we went with 20, we're going to divide it by 20 lots instead of the potential 23. There were a few empty lots and a few lots that could be subdivided in the future, and the city will carry that extra cost until someone decides to possibly divide their lot into homes. So we will carry that cost until such time happens. We don't want to put this $21,000, $22,000 twice onto one person. They may never plan on developing or redeveloping their property, so. I think that's it for me.
All right, discussion and questions for Thomas. Hi, Counselor Exner.
Just want to make sure, you said that you might have gotten alternative A and B mixed on the map, is it correct? So alternative A is...
On the map, everything on the report, I think on the engineer's report is correct. I think the staff report, we flipped.
Okay, I got it.
Everything in the report matches the map, everything.
So on the number of lots between 20 and 23, if you divide it by 20, price per lot's going to be much larger. Was there any kind of comment from the people that were in this development, LID potential, that was talked about 23 versus 20 lots?
We have not talked to them about that yet.
As if, if you divide it all by 23, obviously each one of them has a little bit less.
If we, those couple lots that potentially could have two homes on, we would be, you know, charging them twice the amount, and they may never redevelop their property. That's the reasoning for the 20 versus the 23.
Counselor Petezold.
Yeah, I'm just curious, after reviewing this, what the, looking at the map, what's the difference on the maps between A, alternative A and B? Is there an extra extension? It's, I remember reading it's deeper on B.
So, alternative B runs south along Bluff and then up John's Rude, and then the only difference is B, or sorry, A runs up through John's Rude, and it's, it doesn't run any further south than John's Rude Road. It runs back behind those lots west of Bluff.
West of Bluff. So that would be butting up to the school district's property?
Yes, there'd be an easement on, I don't know if it was on the school, but it's just on private.
On private property. And that's because the gravity feeding down to those lots for the sewer part?
Yeah. And if we run it through Bluff, alternative B, the sewer would have to be a little bit lower, deeper to get the sewer out there. Possibly have to pump up to the road.
They remember, too, so what's in front of us tonight is just moving the process forward, not adopting the process.
Correct.
I just, I guess, question is, the family, Mike, that I'd, or Jordan, that I'd been corresponding with on Bluff, are they anywhere near this, near the sewer deal?
I think that's north.
Yeah, that's kind of the feeling I got, too. They were quite a bit away from that.
Just the one with the front sidewalk?
No, no, that's another situation. No, yeah. These guys, just a family that's looking to do an additional dwelling for a grandmother.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so that brings up a great point. I know that there's other properties north of this that the sewer does not extend north to, and so, I don't know, I'm kind of excited to be able to see this for the property owners. Hopefully, they're all in favor of this, moving the process forward. I think it's a great thing our city should be doing in helping out that as septic and everything else start to fail and others, but also extending that farther north to other developments that could be potentially coming in as well.
Well, it's a good ques, it's a good kind of issue is, you know, what kind of educational campaigns do we do to allow people to know their rights to be able to collect these kinds of petitions and stuff to move these districts forward?
Actually, we've taken about three runs of getting sewer service in the North Bluff area, probably since 2010, maybe. And the level of interest ranged from apathy to outright outrage, somewhere between there.
Is that right?
And so, yeah, I mean, the people in the John's Rude, Bluff area, they've been kind of consistent about this, and they've waited for these larger processes to play out, where we looked at doing all the unsuited areas, clear out the kill zone. And, you know, there was just no enthusiasm on the part of the property. And we had meetings in the neighborhood, and several of these, we had some pretty detailed plans drawn up that would allow, it was a fairly accurate estimate, and that just went nowhere. And so I think the people in the Bluff-Johnsrued area kind of said, well, we can't, obviously we can't wait for the entire solution. We need to solve our own problem. And that's what, you know, this is what's great about, you know, I think it truly is a citizen initiated and system, I think. The only thing they need from the government is help with design, construction, financing, everything. Because, again, it's just not feasible if you're one person and you're 700 feet away from the sewer to undertake a process like that just for one lot. So that's really what the LID process is there for. It is pretty rarely used, but this is really what the intent is, is to allow people to make improvements to their property.
So I guess that kind of goes to some of the questions I had, or at least the directives I kind of was thinking about, which is really, some of that outrage is making sure that we're real, this is just, this will be forces to move forward, but let's really make sure that we're communicating to the residents in that area, you know, that what we're talking about doing here and what the consequences are, you know, and what it means to them. So it sounds like we're doing that through a letter process, through the mail. Is there how many days before we going to, before it's going to be in front of council to adopt it versus when those individuals are going to receive it in their mailbox? And are we planning any kind of non-traditional media stuff, like using social media and stuff to notify people as well?
Well, in the ordinance itself requires a mail written notice. You know, the ordinance was written many years ago, so that was the height of technology at the time. But again, we're only dealing with people in this district. We're not trying to solve the problem further north or in other unsuited areas in the city. This is something that came, you know, if this council wants to take another run at the greater area, we can certainly do that again. We have old material already sitting in the files, so it wouldn't take much to do it for other areas. But I think maybe this would be a good, depending on how this process plays out, this might be, serve as an example to other people to say, you know, this is something the city can help you out with if you're willing to invest a little in the process.
Counselor Exner.
Yeah, in that regard, how extendable is this north and south, depending on where we don't have any current sewer connections? Is it easily addition to, or will it take quite a bit of effort, or what's our strategy there?
Well, I mean, you know, the traditional view is, gee, there's a road, and there must be a sewer in it. I can connect to that. But topography really plays a big role. There may never be a sewer that goes up Bluff Road all the way to council. Or if there is, it would be very expensive and serve a very limited area, because a lot of this stuff on the east side of the road is over the cliff, so you've got nobody to pay for that. So, most of the, most, north of this, north of, like, John's Rude, Duke Point, everything's really going to enter the train west. And so some of that will really take place when there's some development in those areas. And that's traditionally how a lot of areas have acquired sewer service. But, you know, there's something unique with the topography on Bluff, where, like I mentioned, there's no, very few houses on the east side, and so you'd have to, you'd have a smaller pool of people that would have to come.
Is there more to the south of this district?
There is. There's a sewer right now from Bell Street back to, in the area, Marcy Street. There's a pump station on Marcy Street that takes all the sewage south of Bell Street and pumps it back up on the highway.
So it already is a logical district that doesn't need to be extended, or would be illogical extended?
Yeah, it might go a little bit further north, you know, if somebody else wanted to go through the same process. But now we're just talking about the people in that area, I think, on the last page of the staff report, that shows the benefit area. That's all we're talking about now. That's the only people who submitted the petition.
All right. Well, as we move forward, I just really want to make sure, now, I don't ever check my mail, so I understand that there's problems here. But I want to, really want to avoid having folks from our community get up to the podium and say that I just received my letter the night before, and I'm really upset that I wasn't notified that this was going on in my area. So anything we can do to avoid that, I appreciate.
I mean, that's what the code says, that you can't, the letter has to be out, minimum 10 days before you hear. So we have plenty of time, yeah, because we don't want to hear that either, when people say, you know, I haven't checked my mail for a couple of days. I went up to the mailbox and I see this is out tonight.
Right.
I think, I think the neighborhood knows. I think we have a couple of people here, they're in the neighborhood. So I think there's a pretty good understanding of what's going on.
Okay, Counselor Petezold.
Can we do, it's only 20, so property owners, can we do a certified mail? And then we know that they've got...
Yeah, sure, we can do that.
I mean, the cost of certified mail for 20 residents, it's not like we're doing the whole thing, right? And that is our stipulation. We do, the legal thing is, we have to mail it out there.
Let's go to the next step.
Yep, let's go to the next step. And I don't, I think we're all maybe on the same page. I think the only other decision is Plan A or B. I'm for Plan B, as it, the cost difference is very small, and I heard was not having to pump it. That's just going to be down the road, a long-term issue with electricity and pumping and everything. So I'd like to make a recommendation, if we're ready for that.
I'm ready.
So I'd like to make a recommendation to move to accept the report and direct staff to prepare preliminary assessments, provide notice to affected property owners by certified mail, and schedule a public hearing to consider objections to the formation of the local improvement district for Plan B.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
A motion from Counselor Petezold and a second from Counselor Smallwood. Any more additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mike, Thomas. Appreciate it. We're on to the consent agenda. Carrie, were we able to change the consent agenda?
Yeah, I don't know if you can see the changes, but I changed it, removing all those sentences and just, you want just that one line, correct?
Well, what we agreed upon was the last line in the, our current statement, was what we had agreed upon at the last meeting.
Right, that, that one line is what you wanted it to say.
Yeah, I didn't open it up. Yes, and I saw that you made the changes in the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any discussion on the consent agenda? Do I have a motion?
Motion to prove consent agenda is written.
Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion by Counselor Hamlin, a second by Counselor Exner, that we accept the consent agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Counselor Schultz.
I abstain from this vote, I believe.
Counselor Schultz definitely needs to abstain from that vote, as she was not part of that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Same entrance report. Jordan, you're up.
Yeah, just really brief, for the ICE forms too much, just want to follow up on public comment from last council meeting. Thank you to Public Works, Thomas, Mike, for following up, installing traffic counters on miney. And we're going to get some data on speed and volume of traffic in that neighborhood, so doing some follow-up on that. And then I did just want to bring up a couple of your upcoming meetings, just because they're coming up fast this week and next. And they're a little unusual. You have the Saturday at 9:00 AM meeting with the Parks Board here in the City Council chambers. We'll set up the tables and also videotape that meeting so we can document watch later. And other members who could not make it can also watch what they missed. You have the workshop with ODOT coming up on Tuesday night, next Tuesday. And is that, did we confirm 6:00 or 7:00 PM, Mike? Do you remember for ODOT?
I think we'll talk to them on Wednesday, but we're saying 6:00.
Yeah, so we're trying to, trying to schedule that for 6:00 PM again here. And then the following night, on February 13th, is a presentation by Murray-Smith on the wastewater system facilities plan. And again, here in the council chambers, we're going to advertise it, push it as if it's a council meeting, just so that we can hit the button and record it and have that presentation so we can use it later. But it's going to be advertised as a presentation, as a public meeting, not as a council meeting, so that we can pack this room hopefully and have more members of the public learn about what's happening with the wastewater system.
Quick question. I was looking at my calendar. When you said, is it at 6:00 or 7:00, 7:00 or 6:00?
Trying for 6:00.
6:00.
Go for sure.
Yeah, 6:00, we're just going to confuse you.
For the ODOT, ODOT workshop.
For ODOT. And then the following night on Wednesday, if, again, this is not a council meeting, so your attendance isn't mandatory, but it would be at 6:30 PM, the presentation. So if you're there by 6:00, you'll be okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And that's it.
And that's it. All right, council and committee reports. We'll start with you, Counselor. We'll start with you, Counselor Schultz.
I'm going to be attending the first, my first library board meeting on Wednesday. I'm spoken with the director over there, and I'm excited to jump on board with what they're doing.
Great. Glad to have you. Counselor Exner?
A couple things. One is, I've been made aware that we haven't had a update or a relook at our fees in our planning department for quite some time. And one of the things that we did in the past was, we said that we would like to see numerous small upgrades, rather than farther apart, larger. It makes a lot of people pretty angry when you see these big changes. So I'd like to suggest that the planning department look into where those are, and I think that may be the same way with some of our other departments, and just making sure that we don't get into a boat of waiting four or five years to be able to increase our fees as they're needed, but doing it small, short pieces of increases, so just so that that's out there. Another thing, we were talking about a March tour for the Wes's Tri-Cities Plant. Let's look at a, a, a plant that's very similar to what we're talking about. I didn't know if that was being worked on yet, or have we did some forward-looking at that, or do we need to...
We haven't yet, but we could set that up.
Okay.
You can lead me off that one.
Yeah.
You were going to lead that, I thought.
Well, you were going to come back for the August tour.
That's right.
The hotter, and...
I really think that's an, would be important step, is to take a look at that, whatever convenience we can do, make a look at that, chance to see what kind of plant we're talking about, get a good idea what that will look like for us as a council. And that's it.
Counselor Lee?
Yes, I'm going to the C4 meeting this Thursday night. They haven't met since last year, so I can't report much action.
Yeah. Counselor Hamlin?
School board meeting next week. That's it for me.
Counselor Smallwood?
I'm saving some room for...
Believe me, I'm going to go quick. I was not able to attend the last Parks meeting, but I did watch it on the video, so they're moving forward with, for their presentation that's coming this weekend, and I'm excited to see how that rolls out. We attended City Day last week. I'm sure they're going to address that, so I won't steal any of your thunder, and that's it.
Yeah.
Pass the item. I forgot. Thank you.
I just, Tickle Creek Trees, we had a windstorm here a few weeks ago. I didn't realize how bad it was. I hadn't been running down Tickle Creek, Tree, Creek, Tree, sorry, getting jumbled up there, but I just want to give kudos to our Parks and Public Works people out there. These trees, if you haven't had a chance, it's just on the east side, walk, run down there, walk down there, whatever, and you'll see some amazing twists and turn as trees were snapped in the middle and landed, and some very large ones across there, but they have been, what do you call them, bucked up and moved away, and so thank you, Mike and Kelly, for your guys' teams, which whoever did it, I'm sure they had fun with a chainsaw. Maybe I would. But it also shows what happens when you just take a forest right out of nowhere. And even though it's been a few years, the wind had must have come from a different direction, but it is quite a sight to see all these, you know, 10, 20 feet up in the air and just snap. I'm sure Kathleen's already seen it, but it's a, but just thank you again, because it's easier to run down that trail when you're having to leap logs. Capitol, we went to the Capitol, and it won't still, Stan's Thunder there, but it was fun.
Really didn't have it to go.
It was great. I would say, you know, we, I think the three of us, we walked around, we're walking around with a celebrity, because everyone knows, didn't realize that Stan had actually worked at the Capitol there for a few sessions, and so those people were still there, and so they knew them all. And it was great to kind of see that inside position there, as we position ourselves for our goals that the council had already laid out. And so that was, that was a great trip. Met some great people there. And then Stan and I met with Jordan, with the Skippers and Lundens the other day, so thank you for setting that up, Stan. It was a great meeting starting, and it went very well, and so, and then I think that we'll hopefully have a future, more conversations in that meeting, from that meeting, going forward with them, we hope. So, and that's all I have.
Well, I called for brevity, so I'll try to follow, follow my own words there. Just quick items.
You have eight sheets of notes.
Yeah, eight sheets. So what I'm going to do, is there's some dates on here. I'm going to send an email around to council, and Carrie, if you would attach it on to the agenda, that way we don't have that long before like this last time. But City Day, just a quick thing on that, you know, just to say out to the public what a neat experience that was. I mean, your council is really, we're, I'm excited to see how much we're really coming together here, and it's a neat experience. We have our discussions back and forth up here at the Ostrom, but to be sitting shoulder by shoulder and really advocating for our community is a pretty neat experience. It almost felt like kind of a team-building experience, and it really, it was, it was neat. So thank you, everyone who participated in that. And, you know, so we have on the 13th coming up, this wastewater treatment facility, public meeting, and, you know, and just on that, you know, so that was the big item that we were talking about, the legislature, and trying to secure some state funds for that, and Counselor Exner is, was at a Sandy Watershed meeting last week, and just trying to bring those stakeholders in early in the process. Just really appreciate that. Counselor Lee has joined Water Resource Committees at the county and state level, and so it's all hands on deck, and it's been really neat to see us come together as a, as a council to really advocate and try to work on behalf of our community. So again, Mountain Festival, I'm on that committee. You mentioned C4 is coming up. Mountain Festival, we're looking to have a meeting with the leadership there, with different department heads here in our city that play and interact with the Mountain Festival a lot. You know, that festival really should be a showcase for who we are as a community. It's a lot of people in the state's only interaction with Sandy throughout the year, so let's really make sure we put our best foot forward on that. As far as events, like I said, I'm going to send these around. Please take a look at them, because there's a variety of community events coming up that gives us a chance to be outbound and out there. But one of them that we're specifically hosting in conjunction with the chamber is, is this Morning Perk that's coming up on Wednesday, the 6th, from 7:30 to 9:00 AM in the morning, here in our council chambers. So anybody that can show up to that, that'd be great. One future deal is that Clackamas County is having their State of the County Forum with their county commissioners on February 13th at the Monarch Hotel at 11:30. I'll be attending that. Let me know if you'd like to also attend. But that's pretty much. I'll be sending around everything else, just on that City Day, the water treatment. There's some dates in that report where we're going to have a representative from Senator Merkley's, nope, we already had that meeting with Senator Wyden's office, and then we're scheduling a lunch with Congressman Blumenauer as well, to really get in front of them on that project. ODOT meeting coming up, so let's get prepared for that. We might have some representatives from Sandy there, and really, let's try to put ourselves on the map for some of these big projects coming up as one of the quicker-growing cities in Oregon. That's my report. Thank you to staff. On staff reports, I've noticed those are really coming up and being updated frequently. We read those. We really appreciate it. Is there any other updates from staff? I want to kind of use this time for anything that needs to come up to the surface in front of us as council. All right, good. Listen, Jordan, everybody drive safe.